It's Monday, June 18th, 9:00 a.m. It's the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First is to review the agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Matt, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next is received comments from the public. Is there anyone that would like to step forward and address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on with item number four. Discussion on possible action to approve claims dated June 18, 2018, in the amount of $548,046.97.
Move to approve.
Motion by Jeff, second by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number five, items with county engineer Keith White. Good morning, Keith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I provided a number of inputs for you. I don't know if anybody needs anything. Can we talk about the excavator first?
Let me just read that. The discussion on possible action to authorize various equipment purchases. Now, thank you.
Yep. Want to take up the 308 E2 excavator first? That's the machine we have on North Mulberry right now. Or that's a demo that's on North Mulberry right now, where we've been cleaning some ditch along there. This is a potential replacement for the tractor backhoe in lieu of replacing with a new tractor backhoe. And what we would propose, if we did get this, was to delay the, and trade the backhoe on one of the two items we have delivered in the fall, which is either the large excavator or the motor grader. Questions on that? Okay, well, I'll move on to, I guess beyond that. Everybody got a copy of our analysis on the semi-tractor? Or need one otherwise? Bottom line, it pencils out, it's just a less expensive way to haul rock. You're gonna, you're going to haul, you know, over twice the tonnage with the same labor cost with only, you know, with only moving one truck instead of true fuel. The tractors tend to be, I will tell you, the numbers I used all along were rather conservative. But you can see, you know, first cost of our last set of plow trucks were costing us about $207,000. This is about one, gonna cost about $149 for a tractor and trailer. Fuel consumption on the tandems runs between four and actually 6.2 on one truck. And it is the newer ones that are more fuel efficient. And that's a conservative number on the tractor-trailer. So equal or better fuel mileage. And payload, again, runs, the older stirrings, we're getting 12 tons on. The newer trucks are getting about 10 and a half, 10 and three quarters. So we're gonna more than double the payload. And I really would hope that over the life of a tractor, that the reduced miles on a truck can lengthen our trade cycle on those by at least one vehicle over the period. So I guess we think this is a, you know, we now haul from multiple sources, which we did not when I came here. We haul from four different sources. So we think this would be a good way to get started on this. And prices on the tractor-trailer and those.
This is a bottom dump.
Those numbers are really, did they send that one? Nancy? No.
On the what, the trailer?
On the tractor.
Tractor, yeah, you had them $109,000.
Yeah. I made copies, but I'm not seeing mine. Sure, thank you. Those numbers are really good. Even on our last tandems, MAC has been very cognizant of what they have to do to beat out truck country. So their numbers have been aggressive. Those are really good numbers. I don't know if we'll see those again. Probably not. And then the bottom dump, I, you know, I include the one that we had got when we asked that it be received. And then, like I said, that totals up to 148.9. Questions on, on the cost analysis?
No, I'd just comment on that. Item four, to me, that kinda explains where I was at, trying to understand the need versus the want. Because everything above it, you know, it's very self-explanatory. And it's kinda where I figured it'd be a differential. I didn't know the numbers, but they're substantial. But the bottom one, the number four, other benefits, that kinda explains the need part. So you're expected 15,000 miles saved on the tandem plow truck fleet. And that kinda explains, well, that there's a need then. Because that's where I was having my problem. We've never ever needed it, and all of a sudden, we need it. Is it a need or a want? We can, it's like somebody that says, wow, I got an ATV, and I got a, you know, four-wheel-drive truck, and I can do all these things and play all these games. But who's got the most toys? Well, if we need it, it's good, it's a good deal. If you don't need it, it's not so good. So that's the explanation I was trying to come up with. And I think this meets it.
You take a day such as today, and I was complaining a little bit about how much maintenance was or wasn't doing. Well, we're working on North Mulberry and needing flaggers. And we're pavement patching up on 121st by West Liberty. And that's all we got, folks, so we aren't hauling any material. So it'd be nice to have one guy hauling double when we do have that. But, you know, yes, we still have two positions that we need to replace. But, you know, our labor force stays very, is very small and tight. And it's hard to get too many things at once going on. So I think it's time to delve into this venture. And before we leap entirely into it, make sure that it pays out like we're hoping that it will.
Well, I think many times when I see when you're rocking roads, you're running at least a couple of trucks in together, aren't you? Two to three, usually I see. So it would seem to me to make sense, if you got one you can replace. You know, that's a, that's a one person that can go somewhere else, do something else, and half the trips.
Right.
Gotta be money saved there, so it makes sense to me. I'd move to approve the tractor and trailer combination.
Second.
I've got a motion from Jeff, a second from Matt, on the purchase of a tractor-trailer and the, and the trailer itself.
The bottom dump trailer and the tractor.
Yeah, okay. Any more?
No. The, we have a question, they're both from the same place.
They're not the same vendor, right?
The MAC is from Twim Bridges, and the trailer is from Jim Hawk Trailers out of the Quad Cities. Jim Hawk Truck Trailers.
Is the, is the MAC, folks down in Minneapolis, are they dealers or are they just repair?
They're dealers. Since they, you know, the one time they quoted and we didn't buy, they will not quote for us anymore.
Oh, works two ways, doesn't it? Won't ask them anymore.
Yeah.
Keith, thanks for putting this together, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet.
I have a question back to the 308.
Yes.
How long have you guys been demoing that?
A week.
Okay. How long do you think you will need to have it to see if it is an adequate replacement for what the tractor backhoe actually does?
I think you either make, I'm speaking with the department, you have to make the decision now or you don't. I'm, you know, I'm partly going to say, you know, change is always not what we want to do. But it is, you know, having been said, and I can't remember, I drove by a project, and, you know, there's sets of mini-excavators and a compact loader. I mean, that's, it's the world that the contractors are in. You go to the CAT rental store, and they've got tractor loader backhoes sitting there and mini-excavators. So three out of four people come in there, they take the mini-excavator. We think it's a good fit. So I don't know, we could demo for, continue. But it's a change from what we've been doing.
Hasn't been an issue to move the big excavator in the small one?
Well, we haven't had the manpower to do that. That was one of my grinches this morning. But we literally, between those two, there's 11 people available today. That's the paving crew and the excavating crew today.
You know, the backhoe's a one-man show. You put an operator in the backhoe, and he can drive it out, or she can drive it out to the job site and work. Whereas to move two track machines is, involves more people. So I'm just curious how that, because I'm not opposed to having two track machines. I just want to make sure that we're staffed and equipped to be able to move those around and make them work efficiently.
I don't know why not. That's my answer. I mean, today, it was a matter of manpower that was available. And if we weren't on, bear in mind, the tractor loader backhoe does not go out on a project like North Mulberry and set out there by itself without traffic control. You know, you got two trucks, two flaggers, and an operator. There's only five people there, but it takes five.
I'm already looking for a motion on the, on the 308? Or was this just?
I am.
The backhoe to?
I am.
So the proposal is to replace the backhoe loader with the 308 excavator?
Right.
That you think you want to go ahead with that?
Right.
At this point?
I said, everything we own, which isn't a lot, but fits. They're the same attachment.
We have a motion on the floor. Yeah, okay. We do have a motion on the floor before we move forward here in regard to the tractor and the roll dump trailer. We've got a motion by Jeff, a second by Matt. Do we have any more discussion on that point? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes there. Now, let's have more discussion on the 308 and on what we want to do or?
Well, I'd make the motion that we approve the 308 track loader to replace the backhoe. And you'll trade the backhoe loader in. It's a trade on it, right, and so?
I, we can do that. My proposal is that it trades on either the big excavator or the motor grader that's coming. That frankly just allows us to have it through the summer months here in case there's someplace that we think it is the best fit or it's one guy.
We'll still have a backhoe, right? Yeah, we'll still have a backhoe.
If we, well, he's.
Temporarily.
Temporarily.
Yeah, he said we'd probably replace it this, or trade it this fall.
The tractor loader backhoe, if you ask them how often they use the bucket, the answer's about never, the loader function. I mean, the mini-excavator has a dozer blade on it, so you can move minor amounts of material around. They put the bucket down to help stabilize it, just like the outriggers.
Right.
The functionality you're losing, which Matt pointed out, is that it doesn't move itself very far. But what we do with that tractor backhoe is put in a lot of culvers. So you take them to projects and, you know, they're usually not less than a day projects. And typically, the big excavator is setting on a site for a length of time.
Well, you'd have, it sounds like the way you'd handle this, though, you'd have a period of time to evaluate. Because you'll retain the backhoe for a while.
You would, except I do not anticipate coming back to you and saying we would do anything different. And there's zero plan of that. But yeah, that was my suggestion, that we just hang on to it and trade it on one of the others. We frankly do that with CAT occasionally. They give us our trade prices, and they're good with them. Matter of fact, they'll come take things and pay you cash, if that's what you want to do.
You'll probably get better trade on a higher-value machine, too, with the better trade allowance. They got more room to wiggle.
I'll second Jeff's motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the track loader, the 308.
308, okay. And I've got a second, I've got a motion by Jeff, a second by Matt. Any more discussion for it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Keith. How about projects updates?
All for CAT.
All for CAT.
Were you ready for projects update? Um, well, I'm looking at my notes here. And I was hoping for a little more detail than I have. But, you know, we've still got the upcoming letting that we set here the other week. We've been working on seal coat plans, the hot ex-asphalt plans. I don't think we've gotten started on the joint parking lot out there, but that would still be in the work. Still at work on the bridge up by West Liberty, G28. Again, there's nothing new to report there on where we've gone on that. But there's quite a bit happening in the design phase. Survey, design, right away acquisition. That's all we got on that today.
Okay. Is that it? Anything else?
That's it.
All right, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Number six, discussion on possible action to approve ordinance 06-18-1801, rezoning certain real property in Sweetland Township from A1 Ag District zoning classification to R1 residential district zoning classification on the third and final reading.
Move to approve.
Second, motion by Matt, second by Jeff. This is a roll call vote. Matt?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Nathan?
Present.
And Ivo and I. Motion passes 4-0. Next is discussion on possible action to approve the minutes of the June 11, 2018 regular meeting and the June 12 special meeting. Move to approve. Move to approve. Got a motion by Jeff, second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Correspondence. Matt, do you have anything?
I did not.
Jeff?
Just a number of conversations and meetings last week concerning the sale of the fair property to West Liberty Foods, a potential sale of that. That process has not stalled, but we're moving slowly forward.
Okay. I had nothing. Nathan?
I was down at the Deep Lakes Park beach with my family over the weekend, had a good time. But we had a conversation with an individual there about when, whether the remainder of the trails would be paved.
The remainder of what trails?
The biking and jogging trails. Is it totally paved? Is it, if you leave from the beach area to where, you know, where we had the grand opening at the, I can't remember what the cross street there is.
Yeah.
There are portions of it that are not. There are some gravelled portions, yeah.
There might be a little concern over damage to the finished trails. There's a lot of work to be done down there.
Right.
In the park?
Crossing them. Yeah, I mean, we're looking at the buildings, you know, for the campers and so forth.
Yeah, I think the trails totally paved from, once you just get off the hall road there, all the way to the end of the property.
Not by where you go into where the cabins are gonna be, it's not.
Yeah, that's by the hall road there. It starts right there.
Well, I'm talking about if you go in, and I went over and looked at it. So if you, if you go right, you can go to the beach, you go kinda straight, there's the backing, and then you go left, and there's a little.
That hall road, that's the old hall road that runs across there?
That's what it is, yeah.
And that's, and that leads, actually where the cabins are going, it runs parallel to that. So those, I just walked it a week ago. So it's, I don't know that there's plan to do much more than it's.
I don't know if it is or not.
That'd be a good question for Kurt. Because the, if you look at that first, there used to be an old abandoned cement mixer there, and that's gone. And then there's a big open area, and they took a couple of berms out and cut them to view to the lakes. And that runs parallel, you know, I don't, my question is, I was walking through there, if they were planning to use that for access to the cabins or not, or how they were gonna do that, if they're gonna build another access or what? Because I thought it was, it looked finished to me. But I don't know, the question would be, how's it gonna connect with the parking lots?
Right.
Because that's really the section that there's nothing. I think it starts right off the edge of the hall road, the old hall road, which I think is where they anticipate the access to the campgrounds and cabins.
I'll ask about that tonight, hopefully if they, what you have to say about it.
All right, very good. Bob, do you have any? Nothing? How about committee reports, Bob?
I had the EMC on Monday night, and we accepted the resignation. Matt shook. Now we'll begin the process of looking for a new individual for that position. I think the criteria for that's being set, put together and set up now. And we did get Jerry Evers to accept the temporary position. So we don't have any issues that aren't being taken care of. The buildings and so forth ended up in a row mass. And so we're gradually working our way through all that, Sherry, and has taken a big role in that, so. That's about all I had last week.
All right, Nathan? Nothing? I had no committees. How about Jeff?
Yes, I had a magic board meeting on Monday, the 11th. We basically did performance reviews, set wage scales for the next year. And based on what the budget was, so.
Okay, that was it. Matt?
I would have had magic with Jeff, but had a prior obligation. And Jeff and I were on the same page going into those evaluations. And, but otherwise, no, I did not.
Okay.
Any other committee meetings?
Very good. Next is receive information from county employees. I don't think we have anyone speaking to speak there. Next is item with the administration office. Nancy, what do we have here? A is discussion on possible action to approve a fireworks permit for Jessica Hammerlink for August 4, 2018. A move to approve. Got a motion by Jeff, second by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. B is discussion on possible action to approve appointments to the Muscatine County Compensation Commission for the period of July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019.
I included the list of the ones that we have in your packet. As you can see, we're in need, still in need of people in three of the four categories. So if you think of anybody that might be interested in serving, if you give me contact information for them, I'll reach out and try to explain what the role of this committee is and.
How frequently does that meet, Nancy?
It only meets if there's a condemnation theory, so it can go years.
So I don't think, I've, in the last eight years, I don't ever recall it happening.
I don't think, I don't think it's met for a number of years.
Okay, yes.
And this is, this is just a pool when they, when they have a condemnation hearing, they don't, we're supposed to have seven people in each category. They don't call all 28 of them. It's kind of a pool that the judge can randomly.
And would this be just for, in the rural county? Or would it be any kind, and so if it were something involving the cities, one of the cities, would this be the same group?
I believe this is just the rural county.
Probably the city people.
So if there were actions, the city of Muscatine were taking in condemnations of their properties, it would be outside of this group's scope?
I believe so, yeah. I confirmed that for you.
So do we need any action on this?
We need to, I'll move to approve the appointments as presented.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Jeff, a second by Nathan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
I'd like to thank the people that have shown a willingness to serve in that role. I appreciate that.
C is discussion and possible action to approve the reappointment of Tony Bruce to a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, on the benefited Fire District Number Six Board of Trustees, and that is subject to the approval by the Scott County Board of Supervisors.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. D is discussion and possible action to reappoint Alan Kilberger to a term ending June twentieth, twenty twenty-one, on the Muscatine County Veterans Affairs Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
I would just comment, he's been a good member, and he always attends and, uh...
Very good.
Excellent.
Good advocate, yep.
Excellent.
Motion passes, thank you. E is discussion and possible action to reappoint Rosie Eichelberger to a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, on the Muscatine County Civil Service Commission.
Second.
Motion by Nathan, second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. This F is discussion and possible action to approve the FY eighteen-nineteen salary schedule. Three percent adjustment to the FY seventeen-eighteen schedule.
And the salaries that were included in the budget that you approved are based on schedule?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Bob, a second by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. G is discussion and possible action to set the county engineer's FY eighteen-nineteen salary.
Do we have a recommendation?
Yeah, I want to hear what it is. Yeah, it's three point four-five.
It's three point four-five percent, yes.
Yeah. Give me a number.
That takes his salary to one thirty-three, one twenty-nine.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. I've got a motion by Jeff, a second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Anything other, Nancy?
I don't have anything else.
And with that, we will... It's nine-thirty. We'll take a short recess and reconvene at nine-forty.